Please stand for the pledge.
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As we always do, let's remain standing and think about our servicemen and women serving our country. Thank you. Welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Monday, November 8th, and it's now 7:00 PM. Trustee Alpert.
Present.
Trustee Corrigan.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
Trustee Solomon.
Present.
Okay. The next meeting, the next reorganization meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 6th, at 7:00 PM, and a regular board meeting to follow. And the next workshop meeting is November 29th, at 7:00 PM.
Uh, the 29th meeting, I'd like to postpone it and have it run December 6th. Any further opinion on that?
So instead of the regular board meeting, we'll do the workshop, or you're gonna do the workshop?
Or just do everything December 6th at once?
So you just cancel it?
Yes.
It is Thanksgiving weekend, so it makes sense.
Okay.
Does anyone have any thoughts?
Nope, that's good.
Alright, so there are, um, I think we have one or two hearings on. We can always postpone them. We'll, we'll, we'll adjust, we can adjust them for the 6th.
Can we actually do that?
We're canceling.
Uh, do we know what they are?
No, no, I mean to-
Yeah, why don't we do a resolution just so that we're, to postpone the workshop to December 6th. Cancel the November 29th workshop and move all items to December 6th, including any public hearings. Ask for a motion.
Do we have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Second.
Second trustee.
Oh, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And also, there's a meeting on November 15th for the comprehensive plan, a Zoom meeting.
Oh, that's right.
At 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM?
Right.
Not 7:00?
Right.
Okay, Zoom.
That'll be posted on the website and anybody can join. It's a public meeting, no public portion.
What was the 15th? It's a comprehensive plan.
I may not be able to attend.
Yes. Comprehensive plans.
Right. Okay, next is a public hearing to local law to implement community choice aggregate program. Do I have a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion, trustee Alpert.
Second, trustee Barone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak?
I believe we summarized, oh, there you are. Hello? Can you hear me now? Sorry.
Check 1-2.
I believe, I believe we summarized this before. We have a representative here who can speak to this if necessary, but this basically gives village residents an opportunity to participate in a program whereby electric supply will be chosen, if you will, or aggregated. Why don't you come on up and explain, if you can explain better than I do. But in order to do this, we have to pass the local law first, which is going to be, and then we're gonna pass an agreement. I'm gonna ask the board to entertain a resolution to hire jewel associates, or to engage jewel associates to run the program, so go ahead.
So the local law, CCA law, simply makes it possible for the village to proceed with this? It's a, it's basically the, the village is taking on to itself the authority that it already actually has through home rule and through a decision of the Public Service Commission. What they, what they, what they do through, what the village does with the CCA program is to make available to the community, the basic electric supply will be renewable energy, clean energy. It becomes the new default energy source. So right currently, Orange and Rockland is the default energy source. If you move into Suffolk today, you are defaulted into Orange and Rockland and it's what's called standard energy, which is largely based on fossil fuels. Instead, the new, if, if the village proceeds with the program, it becomes, the new default becomes 100% renewable energy at guaranteed rates. There are, there's no surprises in it, and that's the new default. But anybody can opt out at any time with no, no, you know, no cancellation fee. Does that answer questions?
Right, and everyone will get, I'm not sure if you said this, everyone will get a notice at the beginning.
Yes, absolutely. There will be an extensive public education period ahead of time, and then there will also be a period in which everybody will get a packet in the mail that will explain the program. More public education will go on. The public education will continue throughout the life of the program, and as I said, anybody can opt out at any time that they want. There's a second part of the program, which is also opt-out, which is community solar, and through that program, there's a guaranteed discount. Generally, communities so far have saved money, I think through the renewable energy program. The six current Rockland community power communities have saved, it's something like $630,000 collectively, obviously. And in addition, I guess that sums it up. Sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to kind of give a whole summary, but I hope that helped.
I have a couple of questions. Let's say, let's say a resident already has solar on their roof. What happens then?
So they are still plugged into the, into the, into the, into the grid, and they will still be drawing energy from the grid too, so this is still for those periods that they're drawing energy from the grid. But they can't, there is, they cannot participate in the community solar part of the program if you have solar panels on the roof, and that's because you're already getting an incentive from the state. The guaranteed discount that we're saying comes through the community solar program is as a result of the incentive from the state. So you can't double dip, but you can still participate in the base electric supply.
Now, what if, what if somebody who lives in the village that doesn't have solar yet on their roof decides they want their own system separate from this? Would they be able to get the benefits from it, or?
They can still, absolutely. I mean, the best is always the solar panels on your rooftop, but at that point, they would have to come off the community solar program if they're on that.
Uh-huh. But they, but in other words, it wouldn't disqualify them? They could be on the community solar-
No, absolutely, absolutely.
For, let's say, a year, two years, and then say, you know what, I'd want my own, and that's okay.
Totally, totally.
And they wouldn't be turned down for any of the benefits?
Correct. At that point, they would have to bow out of the community solar program, but they can still collect the state incentives for the solar panels on their rooftop.
Okay, and what if, say, a year down the road, two years down the road, the village looks at the numbers and realizes it's not what we were, you know, presented by you or whatever, by your company? Can the village itself pull out of the program?
You know, what I would say is there are going to be some months in which Orange and Rockland is going to be lower. In general, communities have come out pretty consistently ahead, and that's partly because the months that you're using the most electricity, which is really the summer, Orange and Rockland prices pretty consistently go up. They pretty consistently go up in, in the summer, as soon as people are using air conditioning, and, and also in the winter, because energy prices are going up because of the power plants, because, you know, and the use of, I'm sorry, the use of natural gas for heating. So communities do come out ahead. Can you cancel the contract as a community? It's not so easy. I think there, there are some terms in here, maybe Robert has looked at it more closely, but the individual is not in, is not, there are no contracts for individuals in this, so you could have every individual in the village bow out if they so decide.
Right.
But I don't think it's gonna happen. Yeah.
And can people come and go in and out of the?
Yes, absolutely. You could, I've had people call me who initially decided to opt out, and now they've decided to opt in.
There's no limit, like they-
Maybe, I, I don't know, I don't wanna take up your time, but I just wanna mention, they, those who are already in an ESCO, so let's say that you're in an ESCO, that might be direct energy, Constellation, Clean Choice, Green Mountain, there's quite a few of them. If you're already signed up with an ESCO, then you will, you're not considered eligible. That is, you won't get a packet in the mail, okay? You can actually end your contract, and I could talk in more length about that if you want to. You can actually end your contract and sign up for this program if you want to. You know, there's, there's reasons why you would want to do that, because you're, it's a guaranteed rate, there's, there's no exit fee, et cetera, there's no contracts, but I just wanted to mention that those households that are already in an ESCO are not considered eligible unless they decide to, to join it.
So if someone in such an ESCO wanted to join this later, how would they get that pamphlet?
So they would wanna look into, look into it to see whether they have an exit fee. For example, somebody just called me the other day about, they were offered a program where there was a $200 exit fee from one of these programs. Some of them have contract exit fees, some of them don't. So you would wanna first find out whether there's an exit fee. Many of them don't, and you can just say, I want out, and then at that point, you just, you tell them you want out, and then you, and then you opt in.
How would they get the information packet that the rest of the residents like myself-
Okay, so then they just call the helpline. There's a helpline, Monday to Friday, 9 to 5, throughout the life of the program. They can call me, they can email me.
Should the village publicize that helpline?
Absolutely, absolutely, and I'm not going away. I'm, I'm here and I talk to people all the time, you know, to help them individually.
Thank you for that.
And there's also a helpline that's staffed by other people.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public portion.
Oh.
Yep, go ahead.
What if you have solar? Who is gonna service your lines and anything in the case of a down line, an emergency? And I can only speak for me, but all summer, my electric bill was $21, which is the service fee.
Because you have solar?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, how's that gonna help me? I don't see how it's gonna help me.
Okay, so, okay, two things. You asked two different questions. So one, one was about power outages, everybody, that's a very common question. Power outages are almost always local, and the delivery continues to be from Orange and Rockland, so they continue to be responsible for maintenance of the lines, and they are still the ones to call in power outages. This really has nothing to do with the local lines. It has to do with, instead of the, the power plants that are currently, it's the source. So instead of power plants feeding energy into the grid, you will now have renewable energy feeding power into the grid. So, so O and R is still the ones to call in a power outage. And, I'm sorry, your second question was about how it's going to affect, okay. So during the summer, you're producing enough energy from your solar panels, that's terrific, that's the best, but I'm betting that you have more than the delivery fee during the winter. So it would affect your prices during the winter, most likely, for that power that's not being supplied by you.
Yeah, it'll probably be some, something.
Yeah, and it won't fluctuate. O and R's prices fluctuate month to month. This will be a guaranteed price.
And this has nothing to do with natural gas?
This has nothing to do with natural gas, correct. Yeah. This, and nothing to do with nuclear.
No. Also, just to clarify, you just told me a few minutes ago, if he already has solar, he's not eligible for this?
No, 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 no. Okay, clarification, I'm sorry. So he's not eligible for, if he has solar, he's not eligible-
For the community solar portion.
For the community solar portion of it, through which there's a discount. I was assuming that his question was in regard to the base electric supply.
I see, okay.
Is there any other questions? Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So have the resolution here adopting Local Law Number 7 of 2021 entitled Establish of Community, Establish a Community Choice Aggregate Program for the Villages of Suffolk. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. We're gonna do the authorization.
You can do that if you want to do that now.
Yeah. Next resolution, authorizing service agreement with Jewel Asset, Inc., Community Choice Aggregate Program. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Mia Tapas.
What's that?
The Mia Tapas?
Yeah.
They just walked in, so let's skip to the other one.
Which one?
Jaka, the noise permit?
Yeah.
You want me to say?
Yeah, go ahead.
You wanna announce?
No, go ahead.
All right, the next item was a, a permit by Jaka Entertainment Corp. at the Lafayette Theater for a noise permit exception. As I indicated to the board, I've had some back and forth with them and their council, and we're actually very far along, we got very far along today, but they asked for additional time and asked to put it over one month, so we're gonna put it on the 29th, but we can put it on for the 6th for consideration at that time. And I'll, I'll continue to work with their council, so that's gonna be put over till the 6th.
Okay. Then the next review is for Mia Tapas, Tapas and Bar LLC, Special Use Permit, Live Entertainment. Is, is it Alex? Alex. Right up to the podium, please.
Yeah, hi.
Hi, so we're here reviewing your permit, and can you just explain to us what you plan to do, or what you're seeking?
Okay, yeah, it's, it's basically, it's, we're gonna be having a DJ, you know, at times, maybe like on a Friday or Saturday, and that's why we are applying for the entertainment license, because we, we learned that it's required by the township. And maybe at times, we'll have like a two, three members band playing, you know, at a given time. It's not gonna be something that we're gonna be doing every weekend. It will be at times only. That's basically it, but, you know, for the live entertainment.
Do you have a certain number of tables and chairs in the facility?
Uh, yeah, I have a diagram here if you-
Sure, if you don't mind, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah.
Speak loud, okay?
So was this submitted to the building department?
Uh, no, no, this is an internal diagram that are-
Okay.
That are done for the, for the liquor license application. But, but that's basically it, there's three tables. As you see, as we enter, on the left-hand side, it's a, I think it's a four-by-five small platform where we are planning to have the DJ or, or a live band, and then the three tables with four chairs on each table, plus the stools on the bar.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And we have a kitchen, which I only have one, one menu. This is pretty much the same menu that we're gonna be carrying from our other establishment in Havestral.
Okay.
What's the name of your establishment in Havestral?
It's called Mia, Mia Grill and Bar.
And it will be similar?
It will be, yeah, similar. It will be the same, same kind of menu.
Do you have specific hours you're looking for, like when it would stop, or?
Yeah, we're, we're doing, I think, um, que, que horas?
La hora.
Las horas. 11 to 3 o'clock? Yeah, 11 in the morning to 3 o'clock in the morning.
11 AM till 3 AM?
Okay, I guess this is gonna have to be, right. So that's the open time. You're gonna be open from 11 AM to 3 AM, but the permit that you're seeking for the live entertainment, the timeframe would end at what time? 3 AM? That's what you're requesting?
Okay, Mondays through Thursday will be 11 to 10 PM. That's basically it. I'm sorry?
Yeah, no, just about the music. When are you gonna have a band there? What hours are you gonna have a band?
Uh, we're gonna have either on a Friday or a Saturday.
What times will the band be playing?
Band will be playing around 10 PM, and, and the music will end, you know, and everything will be ending at 3 AM.
All right, well, I don't know if the board is gonna let you have the music until 3 AM.
Okay, or 2 AM then, you know, I'll, I'll go with-
Or 2. It's up to the board. All right, well, if I can, you know, this is the first time the board is, is getting a, a diagram of what you were looking for. You really supposed, and I don't know if you gave, I know the clerk asked for a narrative, meaning like a, an explanation-
Okay.
Similar to what we just asked you, describing what you want to do.
Sure.
So you're gonna need to do that. This was just, because we really didn't have anything from you. So can you send all of this to the clerk in an email?
Sure.
Okay. Including what you're looking for, and, you know, the, you're also, they'll set a hearing for December, and, you know, in the meantime, if you can get it to the clerk this week, she'll send you to the planning board, just so you can go to the planning board and show them, and they can comment, because that's what has to happen, is the planning board needs a comment. Remember, you would air for the sign?
Okay.
So if you could put all this together and send it to her tomorrow, she'll, she'll tell you when you have to go to the planning board and then come back to this board.
Okay.
The other establishments in the village that have live music, what time do they typically end?
I'm not sure, I'd ask the chief. That's, I'm not sure.
And Havestral?
No, we're not asking you, if the police department knows.
I'm not, I'm not sure at the time. I don't think at 3 AM.
No, it's not 3 AM.
I think it's 1.
Yeah, I think it's 1 AM.
Yeah. Without, you know, don't hold me to it, but I think it's 1 AM.
Would 1 AM be a hardship for you?
No, we'll, we'll go by that, it's fine. Yeah, we wanna establish a good working relationship with the township, it's fine.
What, what's the address of the establishment?
20, 20, 20 Chestnut?
20 Chestnut.
That used to be the chat room?
Yes.
And before that, it was?
Chubbies.
Anyone remember what it was before the chat room? Georgie Porgies.
So you wanna set a public hearing for December 6th?
This wasn't really a public hearing, was it?
No, yeah, why don't we set it for the public hearing for December 6th? Oh, well, that's up to the board. Do you wanna set another public hearing for December 6th? Do you wanna do a different date, or?
I'm okay with that. It'll be a long night.
Yeah, another one.
Okay, motion to set a public hearing for December 6th at 7:35, no? 7:40. 7:40, December 6th at 7:40. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's get that information over to the clerk in an email, we'll forward it to the, the planning board and to the building department, and the public hearing is set.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Do you have this electronically?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Fire Department, Chief Cop.
Good evening, Village Board. The only item that's on the agenda that pertains to the fire department is under the treasurer's report for the new fire truck, so. Do that now? Yeah, we, myself and the committee chairman and two other members were in Brewster, not this past week, but the week before, inspecting the truck, and we did accept delivery of it for when it, it's ready to come down here. They just have to do some more equipment mounting and the graphics, and it should be delivered within the next two weeks.
Oh, good, okay.
And that's it, unless anybody has any questions?
That's it, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Police Department.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
In the month of October, we responded to 831 calls for service. The only agenda items I have on for tonight, the first one was to authorize the village to donate a surplus vehicle to the Rockland County Police Academy. They're still working on some logistics on there, and so I'm gonna ask that we table that for hopefully the next meeting, we should be squared away with that. My next agenda item is a nomination of a part-time police officer. I would like to request that the board nominate Mr. Khalid Parwanta to the position of part-time police officer. This will allow the Rockland County Department of Personnel to clear him for a future appointment. Mr. Parwanta, Parwanta, excuse me, is recently retired from the Spring Valley Police Department. He was born in Afghanistan and moved to the US in 1998 with his family. He possesses several useful certifications such as standardized field sobriety testing, he's a commercial vehicle Level 2 inspector, breath analysis operator, and in addition, he was recognized numerous times by Rockland County Stop DWI and Mothers Against Drunk Driving for being the top police officer in Rockland County for DWI enforcement. In addition to his reputation for being excellent and well-respected police officer, and as well as his useful certifications, he also speaks fluent Farsi, which, you know, will be useful for us. I believe he would be an asset to the Department of the Village, and I request that the board nominate him to that position.
So I have the resolution here authorizing the nomination of Khalid Parwanta to the position of part-time police officer. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, trustee Alpert.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Uh, the only other item I want to discuss, it's not on the agenda, but I had sent the board an email earlier in the week about the status of our canine program. As I explained to the board, the dog that we have currently in the narcotics detection school doesn't have the attributes to make him a successful canine, so the trainers are recommending we don't continue with him. They have offered to allow our officer to stay in the program if we can quickly obtain a new dog for him. If not, we would have to wait an entire year to put somebody back in the school. So we have, currently have funding through the DARE fund that we could use for this program, but I just wanted to ask the board if that was something they'd be amenable to doing. You know, as you know, DARE is a self-funding, revenue generating, it doesn't require any contributions from taxpayers or from the board. So basically, I'm just looking for permission.
So we have the funds available-
Correct.
Make the purchase of the dog, and the dog and, and the handler can remain in the school.
Correct. There'll be no additional cost, all the rest is basically the same. All the rest is, um, basically the same as, as we, the situation we already had. We have the vehicle, the equipment, um, he would just be continuing in the program that he's currently in.
Sounds good to me.
I'd like to wait until the next meeting.
Well, I can just tell you, if we wait till the next meeting, we're out of this school. We're gonna have to wait an entire year.
We have the opportunity, and the trainer's still in, is able to attend the school now?
The school is, is going on right now. So he's attended, he's in the school now, he's attended the school. If we don't get the dog by the end of the week, we, he's out of the school, they can't catch him up.
And the funds are available?
The funds are available, correct.
How does the rest of the board feel?
One, one thing that came to mind, the, the prior canine, um, officer lived in Suffolk, is that correct?
Correct.
The one?
No, he, he lived in Slutzburg, I'm sorry.
Slutzburg, but that's very close. Whereas, uh, my understanding is the one that's going, that's going through the school right now lives in Orange County.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
So there's a little bit of a cost involved in, you know, commuting with the dog.
Well, this...
We went through all of that already.
Yeah, this was approved, I mean...
We already approved, every one was approved.
They approved his nomination, they put him in the school. Well, the situation we're in now is the current dog that he has is not working out. So we would need to replace that dog. Nothing else changes.
Do we have any leads on the dog at this point?
We would, we would go with the canine trainers this week to a breeder and pick up a dog. There are dogs available, they've already looked into it. So nothing else has changed, it's just the, the current, you know, dog that we have in the program.
Charlie, what do you think?
I, uh, I'm okay letting it go.
Letting the dog go? Not, not?
Not having a canine dog for now.
So he's saying he's letting...
I would, I am not at this point ready to authorize a new dog. If, it can't wait until, if next month means next year, then it would be next year.
How does the rest of the board feel? I mean, we had a dog here for how many years? We had a dog here for many years, we went through this process of getting the dog, training the dog, authorizing the expenditure and the use of the dog, and, and the asset that, a great asset to the village that we have. And now you're turning it around and saying no, because the dog failed.
In the public comment?
No.
I mean, like I outlined...
You know what? I, i- i- if it is something for public comment, you know what? It is, it's something that's very important to the village, to the residents, maybe the public should comment.
You know, I outlined in the email that, you know, our narcotic, our, I'm sorry, our canine program has been a very successful program. We found numerous missing persons, made numerous drug arrests using the canine. We've also brought in a large amount of seizure funds to this village with seizures from the canine. I could tell you alone that we purchased our first LiveScan, um, LiveScan, uh, digital fingerprinting system through a seizure, which was over $30,000. That right there is three times the cost of the, the, more than three times the cost of a canine. So, you know, I, I, I'm just not sure where, uh...
We're gonna say, we're gonna have the public comment during public comment.
Okay.
Unless the board wants to move forward with it now.
I'd like to hear what the public wants.
Okay, so let's wait for the public comment. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Mills?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board.
Good evening.
A few things that we have coming up. Uh, we've got arty time this Thursday, November 4th. Um, I'm sorry, that was for the workshop. Uh, we have the nutrition workshop this, uh, Wednesday at 10:00 AM in the community room. We have the Veterans Day ceremony on Thursday, November 11th at 11:00 AM outside at Soldier's Monument. We have bingo for seniors on November 18th at 1:00 PM at the community center. We have, uh, the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting Small Business Saturday on Saturday, November 27th. Uh, the Christmas tree lighting is going to be, sorry, I just... The Christmas tree lighting will be on Fri- uh, Friday, December 3rd at 6:00 PM. And then the next day is going to be the Christmas parade here in the village on Saturday, December 4th at 6:30. And we have our Pearl Harbor ceremony on Sunday, December 5th at 2:00 PM. I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. So, those are the events that we have coming up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Fred Rela.
Good evening, Board. Um, a few items. The Wayne Avenue sidewalk project is, uh, almost complete, but, uh, the last payment of the grant of $123,000, uh, was submitted with, uh, the final paperwork last week, so we should be receiving that within the next week or two. So, uh, that's good news. Uh, the new garbage truck that we got a grant on through DASNY, uh, $250,000 grant award for that, um, we will be submitting that paperwork probably within the next week to 10 days. Uh, just waiting on the, uh, the quote, which I'm working on, uh, that with Charles. Uh, worked with the fire department, they have, uh, received a $50,000 grant for an ATV and a trailer, okay? And, uh, submitted the initial paperwork with that. Uh, the WE, the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, when I was at the workshop, I was speaking about three projects that we were gonna be going after. As it turns out, two of the projects really weren't applicable, uh, once we did further due diligence, uh, for that grant. So now we're down to, uh, the one project, which is the PFAS removal system, uh, which is about a $535,000 project, um, and I'm working with, uh, Charles and Michael on that. Also Danielle Curtin's been very helpful, um, in pulling that together. That, uh, application is due on November 22nd. And lastly, the West Maple Avenue sidewalk project, we put in for a couple grants through CDBG totaling about $318,000. Uh, once again, you should be receiving the notification, uh, hopefully, you know, this week, that, uh, those grants were awarded, uh, and then we can, uh, start planning and moving forward with that. That's it, any questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open the meeting up to public participation. If there's anyone from the public here that would like to speak, please come up, state your name and address, four minutes, rule, and effect.
Jim Janatino, Tomb Memorial. I find it hard to believe that this board is having a hard time to approve a canine that we've had for over 20 years, that has brought in tens of thousands, if not more, in revenue to this village. They have the money for the dog, the person that's been chosen was approved by this board, he's in training, I mean, he's just, I, I just can't comprehend it. Our, our canine officer and his, his partner, because that's what they are, his partners, these animals, have found lost children, sick people, and countless other things, not even to mention how much time they spent down at 9/11. And, and we're gonna bicker over whether we should wait now or next year? It's, I mean, I don't wanna insult you people, but it leads me to believe that you're not supporting our police department.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Lance Weinstein for Bellevue Terrace. How many conversations did this board have with the Chief of Police in regards to this program? On what date was this program agreed upon? When did this officer start this canine program? This village had a canine, or has a canine, since roughly 1990, 1991. And I'm gonna mirror what Mr. Janatino said. It's been used numerous times. As retired officer of this village, personally, I've used a canine on numerous narcotic arrests, felony narcotic arrests. It's a tool that every department should have. Why are we gonna take it away now? Especially after this board approved it? Mr. Barone, what changed your mind at the 11th hour? You approved it, now all of a sudden are you backpedaling? Are you trying to defund the police department? Because in my eyes, it certainly looks that way. I would like a, a response to that.
I'll wait until the end.
Okay. We'll wait until the end. If, if that's the end of your comment, we'll ask Mr. Barone for his response.
Frank, you have it?
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Well, I'm not addressing this, that's why I wanted to figure, keep this all forget. Oh, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Board. Bruce Simon, representing the Community Foundation. On Saturday, we had our latest Not Just Battery Saturday event. I see some people here that were there, thank you all for coming out. Wanted to give you the count as of now, because I know it's gonna grow. We collected six pallets full of computers and TVs and other electronics, two pallets of chemicals and paint, and one pallet full of batteries. That's all stuff that would've gone in the garbage, it would've wound up polluting groundwater and soil and caused a big problem for us. I'm sorry, Frank? And we got donations as well, the people of this village and the area were very generous to us, and we appreciate it. I just wanted to give that update. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you all, and we'll see you again in March. There's a tease.
There you go.
I would be remiss if I did not mention the people that came out and volunteered. I'm just trying to get out of the way here. Um, the Girl Scouts of Troop 40297, as always, came out and helped us. The members of the Community Foundation, including the lovely and talented Kathy Mills, Gail Curtin, Jack Mean, who actually is the founder of Battery Saturday. This started with him many, many years ago. And the CSEA, specifically Joe Hunt, who went above and beyond as he always does. All the guys do, but especially Joe Hunt this week. And I want to personally recognize him and thank him for this and everything he's done for us and for this village. Thank you all. Thank you, Joe.
Is there anyone, anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Motion to close?
Motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you wish to offer a response, Mr. Barone?
Since we have first addressed the canine unit in the village, it's been brought to my attention that canines are mostly used in the detection of marijuana. Now that it's no longer illegal, it makes the dog not as necessary as it was.
Can't let go of the word for that.
He needs to sit down. Public hearing's over.
All right, then finish your response.
There's, there's no rebuttal.
But anyways, he's not saying a word. Finish your response.
The ability of us to have dogs from other agencies is possible. It's also been brought to my attention that Mawa no longer has a canine unit.
Can I address your house? Chief?
Chief, yes, please. I mean, we already went through the process, we recognize what the dog brings, the qualities the brought, the dog brings. I think it's a great asset to the village.
So I'm not sure where you're getting your information from. They no longer train dogs in the detection of marijuana because marijuana's not legal. The, whoever told you that dogs are mostly used to find marijuana is completely wrong. We've used our dog for not only community events, schools, things like that. As I've stated, as Mr. Weinstein stated, we found multiple missing persons. We have several people in our jurisdiction that have disabilities that we found in the woods with our dogs, we found missing kids with our dogs. The narcotic seizures that we made, that we, seizure funds that we received, tens of thousands of dollars were not marijuana, they were hard drugs. That's just not accurate. And to say that we can rely on another agency for a dog, you just said Mawa doesn't even have their dog anymore. The, the, the reason Mawa doesn't have their dog anymore is because New Jersey has changed their state laws. So many agencies in New Jersey are no longer continuing with their canine programs. New York State has not done that. The canine pro, the canine is an extremely valuable asset to our department. To rela, try to rely on other agencies for that, it's just not, it's, it's not feasible. Boy, this was, this was something that, nothing, when the board approved this, nothing has changed since then. It's the same officer, the same distance, everything's exactly the same, except for the fact that the current dog that he has is not, doesn't possess the attributes to finish the school. They've offered to let this officer stay in the school with a new dog. The funds that I'm asking to use are not even taxpayer funds. They're funds that are generated through the DARE program. That's the officers volunteering in DARE hockey and, and, uh...
Dances.
DARE dances. It's all funding through that, it's not even taxpayer money. So I don't understand what has changed between when the board originally said yes and now. Nothing has changed.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah. Do, uh, the board, what, what does the rest of the board feel?
I'd like to see the, the canine program exist.
You would like to see it exist, so would I. Steve, Trusty Alpert, I'm sorry.
I think it's a good program. I'm just concerned that if we purchase a dog that also doesn't work out, where does that leave us?
So the dogs that are purchased come with a guarantee from the breeder. If the dog is not, doesn't pass the vet, and if it doesn't pass the school, the dog goes back for a full refund. So there's no risk whatsoever to the village with this.
Because, we, we, like, that's the only reason I'm on the fence, is because everything was all lined up.
Correct. And this does, just so the board's aware, this does happen. Many times, dogs will go, be vetted, they'll start the program, that's why they, they assess the dogs in the first couple weeks of the program, because they don't want you to get 16, 20 weeks into this program and the dog doesn't work out. They told us right away, listen, this dog is a great dog, great pet, it's just not gonna work out. It doesn't have the drive, it doesn't have what it needs for this program. That's why they gave us, they're giving us the opportunity, the trainers have offered to go with us to the breeders, select a new dog that's bred for this, have it vetted, and continue in the school. If that dog, for some reason, doesn't work out, it goes back to the breeder for a full refund.
And can you give the, the public as well, an idea, in a given typical month, average, how often is the canine dog put to use?
Is the dog used?
As a canine dog, finding a person, finding...
I mean, I, I don't have hard numbers with that, but several times a month. I mean, they're used multiple times for car stops. Anytime there's a missing person, they're gonna be called for that. Um, you know, the, community policing events, school demonstrations, things like that. I mean, the dog is used as much as we, you know, as we're able to use it. But, you know, the, the times that, that the, you know, um, the, the, um, kid wanders off from his house, or the, you know, the, the person with, um, you know, I, I don't wanna go too much into people's...
The unknowns, Chief. The unknowns that we have here that the board can be used for.
We have several residents in this village that have different disabilities, some elderly that we found in the cold, in the woods. The dog, the, the dog's a successful program. It's, it's, it's proven. The track record of the Suffolk Police Canine Program is a proven track record.
You saved one life with the dog.
Find one person, to me, that's worth it. This dog's found numerous people. And, you know, if we have to call, call around because nobody has a dog, and we're waiting for a dog to come from Newburgh, you know?
Right, for 7,500, 75 to 10,000?
$7,500 that we generated through donations.
That we approved, or everything's all approved, and now we're gonna decline it until next year.
Mayor, it hasn't been declined, we're discussing this.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Just being clear here. Don't, don't my throat, okay? We are discussing this, that is all. I didn't decline anything. I didn't decline anything.
I didn't say you did.
Okay.
Well, now I'm going to ask. You want to... Are you in favor of it? Mr. Soberman said he's in favor. I'm in favor. Mr. Barone is not in favor. Mr. Alpert, are you in favor?
I don't want to be a deadlocked board. I'm going to actually go... I'm going to say we're going to go forward.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Charlie.
I think you made the right choice. I think you made the right choice.
Good evening, Board. I have an update on the Wayne Avenue sidewalk project. Will resume next week with a scheduled completion order about December 1st, 2021. The first item on the agenda would be authorizing payment of application for payment number one in the amount of $810,848, um... I'm sorry, 800... 810,848.66 to Tilcon New York, Inc., for the Phase 11 roadway improvement project.
I have the resolution authorizing payment number one to Tilcon New York, Phase 11 roadway improvement project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Authorizing payment of application for payment number one in the amount of $183,645 to Diamond Construction for the 2021 Right-Away Improvements Project.
I have the resolution authorizing payment number one to Diamond Construction for the 2021 Right-Away Improvement Project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Authorizing payment of application for payment number three in the amount of $8,075 to Meo Electric Company, Inc., for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, contract 1E.
I have the resolution authorizing for application for payment number three for Meo Electric and Communication Company for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, contract 1E, in the amount of $8,075. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Trustee Alpert.
I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Authorizing payment of application for payment number three in the amount of $120,651.68 to Capola Services, Inc., for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, contract 1G.
I have the resolution authorizing payment number three to Capola Services, Inc., for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, contract 1G, in the amount of $120,651.68. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Requesting approval of the professional service proposal from Pingaro and Deutsch, Consulting Engineers, PC, in the amount of $42,000 for the PFAS... PFAS removal system utilizing the existing activated carbon filters.
I have the resolution approval of the professional service proposal from Peak McNicharo and... McNicharo and Deutsch for the PFOS... PFOWA removal system. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Authorizing payment to Pingaro and Deutsch Consulting Engineers, PC, in the amount of $1,293 for the backup power for critical facilities project.
I have the resolution authorizing payment in the amount of $1,293 to McNicharo and Deutsch Consulting Engineers for the backup power for critical facilities. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Trustee Alpert.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Authorizing payment to Pingaro and Deutsch Consulting Engineers, PC, in the amount of $768 for the hardening of water treatment plant project.
I have the resolution authorizing payment in the amount of $768 to McNicharo and Deutsch Consulting Engineers for the hardening of the wastewater treatment plant. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Okay. One last item. Be requesting the board to accept the resignation of MEO 2 Chris Scalini, effective December 3rd, 2021. Chris has been with the village for 22 years, and he can be greatly missed.
I have the resolution accepting the resignation letter of Christopher Scalini, Motor Equipment Operator 2, effective December 3rd, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
On the discussion. Thanks for your 22 years of service, Chris. It's great knowing you, and best of luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Janito.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First, a couple of pretty good announcements. The U.S. government had passed just recently, over this past weekend, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. It's awaiting the President's signature. That will bring about $550 billion of aid to local governments, including ourselves. So it's going to be grants and that sort of thing. Some pass through the state, and some of those directly to local governments. In any event, we'll be working hard on looking at those. Improvements will be looked at in terms of grants for roadways, bridges, anything that currently is infrastructure in the village. So we'll be working with Fred and with Fred Rela and Charles Wicki, of course, on those, as we always do. Some really good news. On October 25th of this year, in this last month, Moody's upgraded us from an A2 rating two notches to AA3. They noted our strong management and our conservative budgeting as the major factors involved in that upgrade. That's the third double notch that we've received. Just five years ago, we were BAA3 with a negative watch. BAA3 is just above junk bond, and negative watch means it doesn't look like you guys are going to make it. We're going to give you a little time, but if you don't make it, you're into junk bond status. So we really came a long way, and the credit goes to the mayor, the boards that were involved in that transition, and everybody else. It really is a team effort. It has a lot to do with the employees that work here and the department heads as well, because they've been very good about keeping to their budgets and saving where they could. The other thing that we had, part of that good news, is that we are closing on our bonds, our 2021 bonds. That's happening on Wednesday. It's $2,480,000. It's going to finance a lot of the projects that you've been hearing about over the last year or so. And we got an excellent rate, 15-year bonds, $2,480,000. And the true interest cost on those bonds is 1.64%. And we saved significantly, not only because of our good credit rating, but as well for the way that we have structured our finances over the years. So those are some announcements, and then we'll go on to the resolutions that we have before you here. The first one is authorizing a capital project for the water wells generator and the water PFAS system. As you know, you adopted bond resolutions to borrow the money. Now we can go about and establish the two projects. That's what this resolution does.
So this is our resolution authorizing the capital projects, 2022-004 Water Wells Generator and 2022-005 Water PFAS System. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. The next resolution... Thank you. The next resolution is that, as Chief Calfer had mentioned, they inspected and have accepted the fire pumper truck that will be coming to us, a Seagrave truck. The amount is $822,803 that will be due to Seagrave, and we're asking for permission to make that payment.
I have the resolution authorizing payment for the fire pumper. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Charles Wicki had brought up at a couple of meetings and workshops that they were looking to hire a grade 10 person to work in the sewer plant, the wastewater treatment plant. And in order to do that, we have amended the budget. As you recall, we had a reduction in the JCO contract operating the wastewater treatment plant. The savings from that would generate enough savings to help pay for a person that would be needed as a maintenance helper. In any event, this resolution authorizes us to amend the budget and to approve the hiring of that individual at a grade 10 starting salary in accordance with the CSEA contract.
So I have the resolution amending the 2021-2022 adopted sewer budget to hire a maintenance mechanic helper. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Charles had mentioned about the Tilcon contract with roadway improvements, Phase 11. The final amount that is coming due is slightly higher due to road material costs, which are in the contract. So that contract total is going to go from $871,557 to $921,557.50. The money is in the contingency... Project contingency, though, so this is simply asking for an amendment to allow the contract to be increased.
So I have the resolution authorizing increase in contract with Tilcon New York for Project 2021-004 Roadway Improvements, Phase 11. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And finally, we have the LED street lighting project. This is where you would actually purchase the streetlights from Orange and Rockland and replace them with LED lighting instruments. We are... We have looked through about three different firms. Yeah, I know it's cutting out. We've looked at three different firms, basically have made proposals, and the lowest one is going to come in at a cost of about $700,000. It will actually have a positive cash flow. That is, that the amount that we pay for debt service on this project over a 10-year period would actually generate cash from the savings of the LED lights versus the current lighting system. So this is authorizing the issuance of bonds in the amount of $700,000 for LED streetlights, and it would require a roll call vote and affirmative four votes from this Board of Trustees.
Now, if we buy these streetlights, who's responsible for the maintenance?
We would be responsible for the maintenance of the streetlights, and part of what we have asked for was maintenance contract cost. That's included in our analysis of the annual cost of upkeep.
So I'm confused.
It would be an outside firm. Our own Department of Public Works doesn't have the resources to do the streetlights, but there are outside firms that do it.
An outside firm to take care of?
Yes, we would engage an outside firm to do it, under contract.
And we'd still have a positive cash flow even with this contract for maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I have the resolution, a bond resolution. Village of Suffolk, New York, adopted November 8th, authorizing the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $700,000 to finance the acquisition and installation of street lighting equipment and upgrading to LED lights, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $700,000 and appropriating said amount for such purpose. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Barone?
Yes.
Trustee Alpert?
Yes.
Trustee Soberman?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Four affirmative votes, the motion passes, the resolution passes. Thank you.
Just one second. Mr. Janito, I'm sorry. I want to personally thank you for all of the sound fiscal budgeting practices that you have instilled in this village of Suffolk over the past six years, which enabled us to get those three upgrades in the Moody's ratings, to reduce our fiscal stress rating from the most fiscally stressed village here in Suffolk, in the state of New York, to no designation of fiscal stress. I think you and the entire staff have done a fabulous job, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Magrino?
Okay, so we've already adopted the local law regarding community choice aggregation. We did the resolution with Jewel. We had the discussion regarding the special live entertainment permit. The Lafayette Theater noise permit has been adjourned. The next item is the authorization to extend Penn Flex as a third-party administrator of the village's LoSAP program. That's the program. It's a pension-like program for the volunteer firefighters, and it's continuing that contract.
I have the resolution to extend Penn Flex, Inc. as a third-party administrator of the village LoSAP program from November 1, 2021, to October 31, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item is authorizing settlement of the DHR complaint. You have the resolution, and we've had discussions in executive session with respect to that.
I have the resolution here authorizing the mayor to sign any necessary documentation, consent of settlement, and the payment of insurance proceeds. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I guess second if I was not the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next is a resolution to accept the petition for a request for zone change and direct circulation. This is with respect to the property located at 37 Washington Avenue, commonly referred to as the Avon property. In addition, I'm just going to amend the resolution a little somewhat. They petition the board to change the zoning classification of the property from PLI, that's Plan Light Industrial, to TDD, or Transit Development District. And they've also asked for a... An amendment to the TDD law itself. So we'll work on that with respect to the resolution. But the resolution is directing... Accepting the petition, directing circulation of the proposed local law, and establishing this village board as lead agency for secret purposes, and again, distributing it in accordance with the general municipal law.
I have the resolution accept... To accept petition, request for zone change and direct circulation of proposed local law, amending village zoning map. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Then the last one is to set the public hearing for that local law, and it's blank, but I think we're going to say December 6th. But I leave that to the board. It's not 30 days, so we do need... You wouldn't be able to vote on it likely that night, but you can start the public hearing that night.
Can we do it, the workshop after that meeting?
I don't know what the date would be. I don't know if you're going to have a... Do you think you'll have a workshop?
I think it's the 29th.
No, no, there's no... Of December, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
December 27th.
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 You can set it for then if you like. That's beyond the 30 days.
What is the board's choice?
27th.
Is December 6th?
No.
27th, December 27th?
Either way, you're not voting it on the 6th. You could start the 6th and continue it to the 27th. Or just start and maybe finish the 27th? I don't know. That's up to the board.
Start it on the 6th.
December 6th is okay.
December 6th?
Okay, Steve.
December 6th, they'll have the... Start the public hearing, 7:40. 7:45, and most likely will adjourn it until the next monthly meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I did.
I'm sorry. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That's it for me?
That's it. Trustees?
I have nothing. I have been contacted again by the woman who is continually frustrated with noise from the gun range, and I think this is an issue we need to evaluate a little further, because I don't think anybody should have to be hearing guns go off while they're trying to raise young children. I think it's just inappropriate. And I look forward to working with the Ramapo Sportsman in the future to come up with a workable solution, because what's going on right now is not working out for the residents that are adjacent to that area, for instance, in the Sheldon.
Anyone else? Okay. Now, the resolution here, approval of the minutes at the Board of Trustees Workshop Meeting from October 25th. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I think that's it. The last thing I would like to say, it's my last meeting. I enjoyed my past seven years working for the Village of Suffolk, working with all the employees and staff. It's been a great run. I wish everyone continued success. Thank you very much. Motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.